This meeting of the Kirkland Planning Commission is called to order. Let's start with a roll call.
Margaret Bunyal. Erin Jacobson.
Here.
Gina Madea.
Here.
Julia Nolan.
Here.
Scott Reiser.
Here.
Angela Rosman.
Here.
Ronnie Rutherford.
Here. And with a majority of commissioners present, we have a quorum and may conduct business. And the next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Are there any members of the audience either in the room or online who would like to speak to the commission? If you're online, you can press the raise hand button. Yeah, we have one here. You can go ahead and come straight on up if you'd like to speak.
This is our first time coming to something like this, so it was more of me just asking like if at any point in time, if we have a question.
So.
Not necessarily that I have a question just yet.
Okay, we have, there is time at the beginning of the meeting and time at the end of the meeting for public comment. So, and we only have one major item on the agenda, so you can comment now or.
Questions would be to staff if you have questions. I'd say, yeah, okay.
Sounds good. All right. Then seeing that there is no one else who wishes to speak to the commission at this time, we will proceed on to the next item on the agenda, which is special presentations. We have none today. The next item is our study session on the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. Steph, would you like to get us started on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we jump into Critical Area Ordinance, wanted to welcome our newest planning commissioner to the dais, Commissioner Bunyal. So very excited to have you all back to seven commissioners and excited to have Commissioner Bunyal on board before we hit the public hearing for the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. We have briefed you on this one before. This is really intended to be a good deep dive into the Critical Area Ordinance Update for you tonight. It's the only item on your agenda, so we gave ample time to answer any questions you might have. We did include full drafts of all the code amendments in your packet for tonight to give both you and any members of the public good opportunity to look into those draft code amendments prior to the public hearing. Staff's gonna walk you through really the significant changes in the code that we expect to result in some change on the ground. And they'll do a lighter touch on some of the amendments that are more along the lines of clarity edits and things like that. For each of those items that might result in change, they're really, we're really asking you the same few questions for each of them, and staff's gonna do a lot of call and response with y'all tonight. So for each of those items, we're gonna be wanting to understand from you if you have any questions about the proposed amendment, if you'd wanna potentially see any changes to that amendment prior to the public hearing, or if you need any additional information or background information about that amendment before the public hearing so that we make sure that you're well prepared for that. So with that, I'm gonna be handing it over to our senior planner Jen Ander and our environmental program coordinator Anna Heckman to walk you through it.
We got it. Hello, everybody. So we are back to chat with you again about critical areas. We're doing a little swap this time. In past meetings, you'll know we started with 90 and got into all of that information. We're gonna go through 85 first this time. It's a little bit more condensed, and then that'll leave us plenty of time to go through everything on 90. On the right-hand side of the slide, a little refresher. Allison just went over the questions nicely, so questions and feedback on the code and the amendments you might be interested in, or additional information prior to a public hearing. I'll quickly give an update on the feedback we've gotten specifically for 85. When we started the project, we reached out to the state, so DNR, subject matter experts by way of our consultants. And everyone was feeling that our, our chapter 85 as we started was a really great foundation. Lots of good things were said. Definitely appreciate that we have peer review built in. I learned that that's a little bit unique to Kirkland and is looked on favorably. We also had sent out the areas that we were looking to explore to do amendments and got some pretty positive feedback there as well. Since we've last spoken, or kind of more recently, we've received emails from community members, met with neighborhood associations. We met with the development community, and I believe Planning Commission received a comment letter from M-Backs earlier this week. So we've kind of gathered all that feedback. A lot of what we hear from, from those different groups would be a request for exemption for low-risk projects. Are there projects where we could also exempt from peer review? Maybe you still need a geotech report, but can we have an exemption for peer review? And then also exploring the difference and distinguishing between natural versus engineered slopes. And ultimately, it all is kind of circling around some very similar themes. So simplifying the review and where can we build in flexibility to our code? Okay, so this is probably a familiar list. It's a list we've had in several packets, and so that hasn't changed. These are the five areas that we looked at again, balancing best available science is recorded, or required by the state, code clarity, and then building flexibility for review and permitting and things like that. We're also working with one of our consultants to make sure that any of our updates align with geotechnical practices, because that's very important when updating this chapter. I'll go through each of these one at a time. Really quick overview, I'll highlight where we updated the code to respond to each of these items, and then I'll take a pause each time so we can do it in bite-sized chunks for questions or comment. Okay, start with landslide hazard definitions. So the moderate landslide hazard definition, you can see at the top, the existing code, it's areas of slope between 15 and 40% that do not meet the definition of a high landslide area. And actually, we got some feedback from one of our consultants that recommended we establish a minimum slope height. So the draft code has five, five feet in there right now. And what that does is if in your backyard you have an area that does meet that slope grade, you know, 15 to 40%, but it's really only going two feet high, it's really not posing much of a risk, the updated code would reduce the amount of moderate that is mapped throughout the city. So it helps with some of those outlying areas and those really small pockets in the backyard. We also looked at the high landslide hazard definition. So the text on the left, there's a series of requirements that would classify an area as a high landslide. Things like the grade, has there been historic movement in the area? And one of the last items is the text there. So the high landslide hazard area also includes an area within a horizontal distance H equal to either the height of the slope or 50 feet, whichever is greater. So the graphic on the right kind of illustrates what that looks like. The light red, maybe pink, depends. So that's a high landslide hazard. And you can see a little bit of the orange peeking out. That's the areas that would meet our current moderate landslide hazard area. And the hatched dotted blue section would be this, this H distance, right? It's the buffer around the high landslide. And so this was a space that we wanted to look at building in a little bit more flexibility. Could it possibly be classified more as a moderate? So we're still getting those geotech reports. We're still sometimes getting those peer reviews, but it would open it up for potential exemptions for small projects from peer review. And I'll, I'll get into, if we peek ahead, we included some exemptions, so I'll get to that in the next slide. That's what we have for definitions, so I'll, I'll stop there and see if there's any comments or questions on it.
I don't see any, so carry on.
We'll keep going. Exemptions. So we have a brand-new section, and then also a little bit of a reworked section in the draft code. On the left are items that would be exempt from requiring a geotechnical. On the left are items that would be exempt from requiring a geotechnical report. They're small enough projects, they pose low risk. Existing decks, so repair, maintenance, kind of within the existing footprint, HVAC, mechanical equipment, fences, improved right-of-way. The second-story additions within the existing footprint, so not doing something that's building out on your property, but just going up. Those would all be exempt from the required supplemental report and obviously peer review. The area on the right would still possibly need a geotech report, but it would be exempt from a peer review in a moderate landslide hazard area. So, that's where we get into new decks, you're expanding that footprint, shorter retaining walls, less than four feet, the structures that are less than 200 square feet and, that are not meant for habitation. So, we're, we're thinking about, like, backyard sheds, things like that. And then we also moved over a section of the code that already existed, so it's the planning official waivers, and there's criteria that staff would be able to reference for some of those outlying projects that really probably don't need a peer review or wouldn't benefit from it, so we have the ability to be able to waive that. I'll pause again. Yeah.
Can you explain exactly what you mean by improved right-of-way for the exemptions from the geotech?
That is a great question. The intent of it, and it's actually one that we may be revising a little bit from what's in the draft code, we had some questions there. The intent of it is existing pavement, so it will probably need a little bit of refinement if we keep that in the draft code, considering technical right-of-ways can often be much wider than what is the driving pavement. So, there could be scenarios where there is some grade on the side, it's not improved, and that's not really quite what it's getting at, but the intent of it is the actual driving pathway that's already been built up.
Okay, so it is already improved, not a project to create improved right-of-way?
Oh, yes, sorry, already improved.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nolan?
So, for, I think you mentioned that for these smaller structures, they're only, this would only apply to ones that aren't meant to be habitable. How do we determine that it's a shed versus, say, an ADU?
The square footage in and of itself will kind of reduce that. This is also, the square footage is tied into building code, so that's, it's a really common square footage that we see for things like sheds. So, that, that should pretty much handle that. But we do have it actually specifically written in the draft code that you wouldn't have to hand.
Commissioner Booneyal?
The second-story addition, sometimes in older homes, the existing foundation isn't enough, and it requires some grading or some modifications that could have an effect on the slope. Would that still be exempt?
So, yes, we have a little bit of feedback. We just got it in between getting you the packet and the meeting tonight. We've been working with one of our consultants, and they honed in on that specifically, and we're working through some language where it would include kind of retrofitting or beefing up that foundation, but a clear line for them from a geotechnical perspective and in those communications is that it's not expanding the footprint.
All right.
Move on.
I guess we'll carry on.
All right. Structural setbacks. So, this is something we introduced early on. The idea was having some sort of setback from the top of slope, and if you adhere to that provision, then you may not need to include all of the requirements that are listed in the code for a geotechnical report. And you can see in the, in the staff memo, once we were incorporating some of these other things that we just talked about, like the exemptions or maybe reworking some of the definitions for a moderate, there really wasn't as much of a benefit, and since the intent of this was to simplify the review, we were already getting there with some of the other additions to the code. We also have language in there that, it says that the city may require, so we inherently can look at a project case by case, and if it, if it doesn't need a specific item that's listed and everything that could be in a geotechnical report, the code in and of itself already has the ability for us to do that. So, we kind of left this be. There is no real draft updates in response to this. Moving on.
Yep, carry on.
Number four, vegetation requirements. The existing code, it's a little bit confusing. This is really a clarity one. We have part of chapter 95, which is all things trees, points to geologically hazardous areas. We have some wording in 90 that points back to items in 85, and it just wasn't completely clear. The draft code that you received as the attachment, we really wanted to make it easy for people that, if I'm doing work in my backyard and I, I'm not doing a development, so I'm not building a new home, where inherently you would have an arborist report, you have retention standards, all of that, and maybe I'm not touching anything in chapter 90, what can I remove? And, and how do I remove that so that we maintain the integrity of the slope? So, we do have a new section that was built out. If you're wanting to remove a tree in a moderate landslide, we would point you to 95 with all of those good standards of when you can remove, when you would need to do supplemental plantings. If you're wanting to remove in a high landslide hazard area, we have it listed as you would be able to remove a hazard or a nuisance tree, retaining the stump, so you wanna maintain the integrity of those roots, and then we also included a replacement to maintain canopy in that area. So, all under the idea of keeping water off of that slope and helping maintain the integrity of it. There's also something that I wrote that's behind. You recognize that? Oh, yes. We wrote this in the staff report Anna and I are working on. We think that there might be even one more level to make this a little bit more clear for people, so you may see in the future iteration of the draft code consolidating everything related to trees into chapter 95, so it's a bit more one-stop-shop for people. It would still be retaining of the stumps and the hazard and nuisance and kind of everything you see that's in that draft code, we might just place it within a single chapter to help from evopping around the code. Any questions on that one? Last but not least, protective easements. So, this is, this is trying to get at a challenge particularly that I know staff have had, certainly applicants as well. The, the two top bullet points are co, sections of the code that already existed, so we're basically looking at, the city has the ability to require a dedicated easement over a part of a property where it really should restrict development, we should restrict, basically going back there, it could pose a high risk if you're really disturbing that area on the property. That became a little bit difficult when administering a review, and staff were looking towards our subject matter experts, so looking towards the geotechnical engineers for a little bit of guidance of when that should occur. Ultimately, the city and, and staff still make the call as to whether an easement is placed, but we added this last item, and that is, that's tucked under the geotechnical recommendations that would be within a geotechnical report, that is asking those experts to identify areas on the property where a structure or even a setback from a structure should be restricted because it would significantly impact the safety for the property or even adjacent properties. So, it gives us a little bit more educated background to be able to identify that on a property. Any questions on that one?
Looks like we're good.
That concludes 85. That's what we have for you. Just a little flashback to an earlier slide. Again, those are the five areas. Just wanted, we can take a pause if there's anything to talk about before jumping into 90.
Looks like we're good.
All right. I'm afraid you guys are saving all your comments. Okay, so, unlike 85, 90 is a beast. Seventy-seven pages. You guys all read it, right? Got some nods, okay, good. Okay, so, well, so to start off with, we had, we have had some public comments. It has ranged the gamut, so from, of course, the code is very complex and can we simplify it? The code being written in 2017 and complying with state standards is a good basis to work off of. There are some comments about just making it clear, and with that, that complexity comes some flexibility, and so in order to make a straightforward standard code, we would have to limit a lot more of that flexibility. We were asked with the riparian management zone to do a little more clarification on, in limits, to when that would be applied, and we are putting that into the code. There were some good questions that were brought up that we are improving from what was sent to you a week ago. Reducing costs for development, that would be a classic request. Two of the focuses on that, one was vegetation buffer standards, and how can we reduce costs to that, and then reducing costs to those third-party expert reviews. And there's a couple things that we've been able to do. I don't think it's as much as people would like, but there are some things that we can do there. There have been some concerns from stream property owners of the value of their land changing, and that is one reason why we were going with the riparian management zone option versus a buffer increase. And then, we have had some great comments about the desire to expand buffers and repair habitat over time with that thought process that that might be the only way to repair habitat, and so there have been some comments wanting those expanded buffers for that purpose. So, I'm gonna do the same thing here that Jen did, where we'll, we'll kind of go through the slides. We're gonna start with the easy stuff, and please do provide comment and if you have any questions, but we're gonna start with chapter five's definitions. So, we had a lot of definitions that the state had either updated or that we updated, so it was a little more clear. Some of the new ones, I had to practice saying anadromous many times, so I had a few people ask what that was, and we talked about it. Climate-ready vegetation, that is a new term that is, goes in parallel with native plants, but bringing vegetation up into our area, genetic diversity of some of our native plants, but trying to help native plants in the urban environment. No net loss, riparian management zone, waters of the state, we didn't have in our definitions officially, even though we have talked about it for decades. Watershed approach, which is a thought process on how to do mitigation and restoration. And then with wetlands, a non-federally regulated wetland, something that isn't new in our code, it's just a term that we hadn't really identified. So, those are all new definitions. And then we did some adaptations for clarity and to bring into the code with best management practices, critical area buffers, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, qualified critical area and shoreline professional. We expanded that out to meet some of the different requirements that we need for different jobs. So, a wetland professional isn't necessarily the best restoration ecologist and vice versa, and people have different qualifications and backgrounds and experiences. So, we expanded that out so that people can hire people of different qualifications. And then our stream types, we did some adaptations on that to meet, better match the state definitions. Do any of you have any questions? Yes?
Questions there?
Thank you. And we might get there. You talked about some of the feedback on expanding the riparian management zone improvements and that they may be finessed. Is that already reflected in the draft code we received, or is that still work in progress prior to the upcoming hearing?
Everything is a work in progress, but most of it is there, the riparian management zone, we have done a little more clarification and quality work, and we can show you, we can provide some of that, if you'd like, before the, the final hearing. No dramatic changes. We didn't cross out something we've already written, we've just added some things in to clarify, so.
Looks like that's it for now.
All right. Okay, next step into complexity. One of our, we're gonna go through some of our clarity edits. This didn't change how we work the code, but it will change how people view it. We would talk about buffers. We used to call a standard buffer and an expanded buffer, and we would promote the standard buffer, and we're changing that language to better reflect more what the state does and other people, where we talk about the regulated buffer, and anything we're doing inside of that regulated buffer, we have to mitigate for and have to do work with. It's always been that way, we just never really talked about it in that manner, and so we're trying to simplify this and just be more clear in the communication. And so, that differentiation showed up not only in the definitions, but in the wetlands and associated buffer standards. You can, we changed the buffer, in the stream and buffer standards, we changed that language. And then in 90.155, which is, I just spaced out on what that was, but we changed something in there, but it was just kind of where the trickle-down effect was. Any questions on that one? It's pretty straightforward.
Looks good, yeah.
Next set of clarity edits we did in the exemptions section. Some of these are a little more than clarity, or they feel like a little more in clarity, but it was just stuff that wasn't documented very clearly in there. So, for example, with our public property restoration work, we talked a lot about invasive species, which is a very general term, and so we clarified terms to mean the King County noxious weed list. Both regulated and non-regulated weeds are allowed to be removed by our public agencies, so things like knotweed is an unregulated noxious weed at this point in time, but it is still on the list. And we allow our public properties to manage invasive trees. So, for example, holly just got put on the noxious weed list, but it hadn't been before, some of our laurels and other things, so the public property can do that restoration as an exemption. We pulled back a bit on some of the private property restoration, because we didn't necessarily want forests being cut down, even if they were invasive, so we wanna make sure that we're working with community members, but we are allowing more opportunity to do restoration on the private property and providing guidance so people don't find themselves in a pickle by accidentally doing something wrong. So, and then the other one is emergency activities, we did some clarification on that. Do you guys have any questions with that? You're making this way too easy. Okay. More clarity edits, and then also we added just some updates with industry best management practices. And these are parts of the code that were written and didn't really reflect what current best management practices were and the current terminology that's being used. And so, for example, with mitigation, we did clarify, so this comes with that change in our language with buffers. We're clarifying that buffer mitigation is required for impacts within the regulated buffer. It was a common misunderstanding before of what triggered buffer mitigation. And then we wanna emphasize the mitigation sequencing process. This is a state requirement to have that. We've always had it in our code, but we really wanna emphasize that this is used, and we'll be putting more to that with regards to bringing it to contractors, you know, as soon as you're permitting, you see what the mitigation process is and is going through it. Trees in critical areas and critical area buffers. Jen made a comment about 85, and I think we can definitely consolidate, we would move chapter 90.135, which is the critical area tree code. It is for private property mostly, because once you go into development, we trigger a different code in 95, and we can just take that whole section and put it in chapter 95, which is the tree code, so that anyone who's looking for what can they do with their trees can find it all in one spot and don't get confused about whether a critical area or a steep slope is going to compound things. So, that is a pretty easy move. If you guys are interested, we can do that, and we would definitely recommend it. The other things we're gonna do is clarify replacement requirements. We already have that in there for the landmark trees, there's some confusion there, because we already require a three-to-one in wetlands, if someone cuts a tree down, three-to-one replacement, and then, so landmark tree removal would be a little different. And then, we also adjusted replanting requirements, just to better meet industry standards. So, one of the things we have is for tree replacements, normally with landscapes, two-inch caliper and eight feet tall, which is a very large tree. Two-inch caliper tree is, I, very difficult for me, I, to move them, and so to get something down a slope or into a wetland can be problematic and might cause more damage than good, and so we changed those requirements to reflect more of the restoration practices. And so we changed those requirements to reflect more of the restoration practices.
Commissioner Rosin?
Is there any reason not to move 90.135 to tree regulations? Like, is there, why is it there in the first place? And like, why wouldn't it be in Chapter 95?
I think it existed before 95 did. And so this is an opportunity to move it. The same would occur with shoreline code, because we do have some tree language in Chapter 83. And when we go to do a big push on 83, we will change the language and move that as well.
So there's no other, like?
I don't see any other reason, do you?
I think it's just you either have all of your stream and wetland requirements in one place or all your tree requirements in one place. You have to look at trees in one place or another. So I think last time we looked at it, we decided to consolidate all critical area regulations in one place in Chapter 90. And now when we've evaluated it, it seems like there's a little more strength in putting all of the tree regulations in Chapter 95. So I don't think a fatal flaw putting them in either location. But yeah, we're kind of favoring moving everything into 95 now.
All right.
All right. So more best industry or best management practice and clarity edits for monitoring and maintenance. We wanted to increase the opportunity for people to reduce their monitoring costs. And so we put some language in there that for high-performing mitigation sites, for example, when the monitoring after the first year shows exemplary performance, we may be able to waive revisits, which does save money. And perhaps put some influence into that initial restoration. 91.95 for pesticide and fertilizer use. We changed a lot of that language to meet kind of just the best management practices for the industry. A lot of that is requiring the licenses for people who, so if someone is spraying a pesticide for noxious weeds and they are near water, the state does require us to have wetland certifications, you know, so to be applying that kind of stuff. So adding that language in there so that it was clear of what people need to do. And yet we did, we don't have an exemption in there for private property owners. We don't want to promote going to Home Depot and buying something off the shelf and putting it into the rivers. But along the same lines, we're not, this comes into play when we're dealing with mitigation and restoration work. So we're not going to be going to private property owners and knocking on their doors and asking why their grass is so beautiful. But along those lines, it's one of the ways that we have to back up if there is indication of water toxins and quality issues. And then with vegetation buffer standards, these are what we require when you, someone is developing or impacting inside that regulated buffer. We tried to simplify some of these standards in the buffer to improve long-term success. An example is we required a certain amount of ground cover. And in a restoration process, putting ground cover in is often not successful right away. We want to have those shrubs and those trees grow. So we want ground stabilization, which is one of the intent of having that ground cover. We don't want bare soil, but there are other ways to meet that requirement during restoration. And then ground cover can come in at the time that is appropriate. So that's one way to simplify and hopefully increase success. We wanted to increase the opportunity to manage invasive species before planting. So oftentimes with these invasive species, it takes more than a year to manage them. You can't just cut them down. And in the code before, it was interpreted that you would take out your blackberry and then immediately have to plant. And so we wanted to allow some flexibility for that within reason and to kind of meet what is required to be successful. And then we wanted to clarify requirements for reporting so that we don't have to continually ask for, you know, report edits. So for example, when you hire someone to develop your plan, we want to make sure that they're providing everything you need and we don't have to keep coming back to ask, because that costs money when you have to rehire your consultant to make edits. So those are some of the things we did for that. Do you guys have any questions?
That's just something to clarify. So regarding the use of a certain pesticide or whatever, that was to provide clarity and guidance proactively, not because it was discovered that there had been abuse in that space?
There's, as soon as you mention pesticides, there will be polarization of people who never ever want them used and people who want them used for multiple reasons. And so this is a hope to just be clear and to meet the scientific best management practices. The code before had some great guidance, but it didn't quite hit the industry language. And so we don't, yeah, it wasn't due to a problem, but yeah.
Commissioner Rosin?
With simplifying, I see that you like took out some of the descriptions of specific types of plants. Is there like somewhere else where people can find that or whatever? I don't know if it's super helpful. I mean, connectic salal and sword fern is not exactly an exhaustive list. I was wondering.
Yeah, we do have a native plant list, and we refer to that in the critical area code. I think it used to be called the critical area plant list. But there will be a couple of areas where we will directly reflect to opportunities. We don't want to restrict people from being creative. So for example, with the connectic salal and sword fern, that is not a one-size-fits-all for every environment.
So like, if somebody's reading this, do they, is it gonna be really easy for them to go to this section and be like, oh, now I need to go somewhere else to figure out what qualifies? Because it's like native woody or herbaceous.
Yeah, so, yes. And we'll, the intent is that the design of a restoration area is done by a restoration professional, so someone with experience, so that they don't just get sword fern, salal, and connectic. And so, and every site is going to be different. And there is, even our native plant list is not exhaustive. You know, to put down every native plant that someone might have an opportunity to put that would be successful on their site. We don't have that, but we will create, we do have some simple opportunities, especially for private property owners that want to do voluntary restoration. We can help them out. And we'll have links on our site to help people develop their own restoration plans. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
All right, I think we're ready.
All right, we're gonna keep moving forward in complexity. I wanted to touch on no net loss requirements. So our code was, has been very good at requiring improved quality over quantity in the past. And we want to maintain that trajectory. Some of the things that we're doing with, and some of the stuff we've mentioned a little bit before, but reasonable use and non-conformance. We want to clarify when minimum vegetation buffer standards are triggered. And those are properties that are already existing or impacting inside the regulated buffer. And then we added a one-to-one mitigation requirement for legal non-conformances. So if someone with a legal non-conformance was to want to develop more and they're retaining that legal non-conformance, we would want that mitigation for that, what was there. And same for when someone develops within a regulated buffer and they do have minimum vegetation buffer standards met on their property, or if they don't have the space on their property to put, to improve some of that buffer, the one-to-one mitigation would be what we would ask for. General mitigation, we want clarification and simplification of the process to use off-site mitigation options. So for example, someone that doesn't have a good space on site to do restoration, that it's a smoother possibility for them to use mitigation banks and fee-in lieu programs. And we have identified another one. We have fee-in lieu programs available. We've identified another one for salmon habitat restoration. And we want to just make sure that that is a smooth process and simpler, not necessarily simpler to get to. We still have a process of where we would prefer, and this is driven by the state as well. But things, for example, very small wetlands that don't have a high function, that are, already don't require a buffer, things like that. We can do more of this fee-in lieu mitigation for. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Reiser?
If there's low probability of success and it's an existing wetland, so what would you consider low probability of success? Like extreme slope or rocky soil or poor soil?
Well, one example, we had recently, someone had like a 20-square-foot wetland with no connectivity to any other critical area. And that, a wetland that's small doesn't have a buffer requirement. And so to require them to maintain a 20-square-foot wetland, yeah, it was, it would make, it would be a better use of those funds. And the state has a system in place to say, well, putting that money into a bigger wetland that has more functional value, that will create a better space for wildlife and do more water quality, they would prefer. And so something like that is a good example of, there's a low probability of success.
So in some of those cases, is it burdensome to the applicant, though, to make them pay for something that?
Well, we still have to show no net loss. So that applicant, at that time, the wetland was identified. They're not being burdened by having to maintain it on site, you know, and maintain its functions on site. And so it's allowing a release of that burden for them to invest in something that isn't functionally working. But we do still have to have a mitigation, you know, at least a one-for-one for, to show that there's no net loss across the watershed. So, you know, that somewhere in our watershed, we are improving. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions on that? Okay, we're moving right along. Here we go. Best available science for riparian areas. I know you guys are excited about this one. This is where we have to show change. And we have to meet the intent of some of the new best available science. We've gone through this once before. Hopefully you guys recognize this photo or this picture that we've used. And just a quick recap. For streams and stream buffers and riparian management zones, which consist of all of that, there are two main things we want to be thinking of. One is water quality, and then the other is habitat. And our habitat in our region is primarily around salmon, because it is endangered and threatened. And as you can imagine, salmon depend not only on the cold, clean water of the river and the stream, but they also depend on the insects and the native plants and all of the parts that contribute to that stream's health. One of them being shading, and that comes from trees and forested environments. So with that thought process of water quality and habitat, we had put together some options in the past, and I wanted to just review real quick. One of the things, if we were going to go with what the state's recommendation is, we would need to double our buffers. And so that would mean non-fish-bearing streams would be 100 feet for that water quality, best available science. And the fish-bearing streams would be 200 feet. And we had proposed, because we have so much emphasis on quality over quantity, we had proposed option two, which was a different look, allowing that 25% buffer impact to decrease those buffers. But when we look at what the state really wants, that top line is what they would love to see. How that works in Kirkland is a tough one. And you see our existing code on number two. Option one is the option that staff feels might meet all of those requirements and the intent of those requirements. And that would retain the current buffers that we have. And those, think of those as the development restrictions. And then adding that riparian management zone. And we've talked about the intent of the riparian management zone. One is clean water, and the other is to help improve habitat. We know that tree canopy decreases every 50 feet as you go away from the stream. And so one of the requirements we would have for that riparian management zone is increasing our tree regulations to meet what we currently have in our critical area buffers. So retaining as many trees as possible, encouraging planting, and teaching people that they are living with wildlife in that riparian management zone. This is a good example. This is a non-fish-bearing stream. We put these together after our last meeting, and so I just wanted to show it to you. The dark blue is what our existing buffer is at 50 feet, which is what you can build up to. If we were to expand where you can build up to, that's the reduction of what we were promoting in our buffer standards. I'm gonna go back real quick and look at, it's option two. So that's what our buffer increase is. That would be the light blue buffer. And you can see the pictures of the house footprints. Some houses wouldn't be impacted at all. Some houses that weren't impacted in the past, if we were to increase buffers, would be impacted and now be non-conforming. And we have the numbers in how much of that would be impacted now. And then the riparian management zone, it crosses streets. As you can see, across the one street where it says option one RMZ, the houses and the house footprints are not in the riparian management zone, but some of their yard is. And so when they went, would go to redevelop, it wouldn't have to redevelop to meet those wildlife standards. But there would maybe be parts of their yard that we would want to regulate for and encourage more tree canopy. There's an F- buffer option there, and that riparian management zone is 100 feet out. So you can see on one side of the stream, people would not be heavily impacted by a buffer increase. And on the other side, a lot of people would be heavily impacted by a buffer's increase, and they'd be impacted by a riparian management zone. To correlate with what the state would love to see, that 150 feet, which is what the riparian management zone maximum width would be, if we were to put the development buffer in, it would go to that riparian management zone in this F-stream. And so that would impact all of those houses on the south side. They would basically all be in non-conformance. So this riparian management zone, we're hoping meets all those requirements. So, yep, you have a question?
Yeah, so I was curious what functionally it would mean if you were a homeowner who was now suddenly in a riparian management zone who'd previously, you know, let's say you were maybe outside of the dark purple and now you're in that red dotted line.
That's weird, hitting that next. That's exactly it. So what we're proposing with this riparian management zone option, rather than a buffer increase, is if your house is within that 150-foot area, we have the increased tree regulations. So on any of the property that's in that area. And then if we're developing, so it's, this isn't gonna impact everybody all at the same time. When someone goes to develop, we're not, we're not changing what's currently regulated with their development impacts with their buffers. But we are gonna ask that people implement the measures to minimize impacts to wetlands and buffers, which are the wildlife-friendly type of development. So creating sound buffers between your, like an HVAC or something to that effect. Decreasing light pollution. So installing lights that are facing downwards or that shut off, you know. lights that automatically shut off. And so there's, those are just two examples. But there's a lot of opportunity there. And this is, all correlates to parts of our code that we already have in existence. It's just, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So for some of these measures, for instance, like the sound buffers or the lights, how would that be, I guess mandated or enforced? Because there are clearly a lot of options there.
It would be in the planning review. So we would have, and this is a good opportunity for us to help with that clarity because this is, it's already been in the code, but it hasn't been very clear. And so we would want to, we would create a checklist. And so for not only the planners reviewing it, but people who are developing can go through and check. You know, are we putting our HVAC on the far side of our house? Are we, you know, keeping, what fencing are we putting up to keep the dogs out of the river? You know, that, they're, they're very, it seems very simple. I'm sorry for the dog. But having a checklist will help out. And it's really to just to get people to think about that opportunity that they have to live in a wildlife area. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Commissioner Reiser.
One of the concerns I had was existing homeowners that are just doing minor remodels. Is there a variance that is allowed that, I don't know, gives them some kind of benefit? Because they're not developing. They're not maybe adding or putting on an ADU. But they're just remodeling and enhancing their house.
Our plan is to trigger this similar to how we would with the vegetation buffer standards. So it's a larger remodel. Smaller remodels, it doesn't, you know, no, we wouldn't be asking to remove all of, you know, stormwater infrastructure or anything to that effect. So it would be triggered with the larger developments similar to our vegetation buffer standards. Not to say we wouldn't encourage it through education.
Commissioner Medea.
So the recommendations that you're mentioning, I'm faintly remembering. We did discuss those last time, the light pollution, where you place the HVAC, et cetera. So that's coming back to me. What's not coming back to me, and I don't know if it was discussed, but it would be helpful to understand, is if we, do we have like overlay maps of areas where we know this is impacting existing residences as well as overlay areas where future development might have to ascribe to these new changes, whichever's adopted?
We'll put a riparian management zone line on a map for general observation, general viewing. So that would be an overlay that could be referenced by individuals. This, is that?
Yeah, but this is, this is an illustrative example, not an actual section of Kirkland that?
It is all throughout Kirkland, yeah. So every neighborhood has streams. And so it would be associated with the stream. So anyone that is 150 feet from a stream, you know, granted, we know that on the maps, there is some inaccuracies. But what we do in our code already is if you're within 150 feet of a stream, you need to have, and you're redeveloping, you need to have a critical area specialist identify what kind of stream that is and what the buffer is for that. And same thing for wetlands. So this would just be, we'd have it on the map and people could get a general clue for where they lie.
And the option one in your chart, that's all green, that staff feels is consistent with the state mandate, where is the concern where it might not be? Because there's a whole challenge of state and local, right? So.
There is, yeah, that's a good question. Being that we're in an urban environment, the state requirement of, or the state recommendation to double the buffers based on their best available science has a lot of assumptions that we would be protecting critical areas if we expanded the buffers. And in our research, we're seeing that there really isn't any buffers that would be protected. We would just be expanding buffers over the tops of houses and across roads. And so there's not a lot that would be protected in that buffer, but it would impact those people on the streams significantly. And that was that thought with wildlife. With the thought of water quality, that 100-foot buffer for non-fish-bearing streams, I mean, it's, it's known that it takes 100 feet. If you were to have dirty water, it takes 100 feet to clean it. We have 25,000 properties in the city whose water goes into the stormwater system that discharges into the creeks and streams. And so for the 2,000 properties that are along the streams, that also puts an undue burden for their water to be cleaned if it's, you know, in development, right, issues, when we have a whole lot of other properties as well. Now, we have a lot of programs that are going into cleaning water and we want to promote it. And with the riparian management zone, we would definitely still lean on our stormwater manual so that water coming off of roofs and lawns and whatever other pollutants we might have gets cleaned before it gets into the water. But maybe it doesn't need to be discharged 100 feet away. That's, that was our thought process in choosing a riparian management zone over buffer increases.
Commissioner Rosman.
Can I also ask, how does this compare to like our sister cities? Because I know others are going through this right now, too. Does, do any of theirs look similar to this? Or have they gone like a different route? On like this part of the critical areas update specifically?
It is, there are many differences. I know of some people who have started the process and are a little bit ahead of us now and some who are behind. And a lot of people are trying to figure out how to make those regu, the, the regulations by the state or the recommendations by the state, how to make them fit their city. And all of us are different. Kirkland, for example, doesn't have S-type stream waters like many of our other cities. And our shoreline code is separate from other cities. And so we don't have to deal with that at this point in time whereas other cities are. So it's, it's hard to, it's hard to compare. And until anyone gets it through the whole process, we're not going to know. But I've, I've heard rumors from different cities of different recommendations. So my answer to that is it varies. I think what we're proposing is unique and well-thought-out. I'm not 100% sure.
If I could add in just a little bit, I think that in staff's analysis and talking to other cities, because Anna and Jen have, have been meeting with other city staff, one of the things that we did find is that Kirkland has probably already, on average, been doing quite a bit more to protect our streams and wetlands than other cities have. Anna mentioned it really quickly earlier. But I think we're one of the only ones that have already been requiring restoration of buffers with minimum vegetation standards. And so we've already been pushing a little harder on that quality point over quantity than we've seen some of our neighboring cities do. We also already have wider buffers than a lot of other cities. Not all, but a lot of them. So a lot of them are kind of starting with much smaller buffers over the past, you know, decade or so than us. And so that is one of the key differences. We do know that there's several other cities that are especially more urban cities or suburban cities similar to Kirkland that are sort of questioning how to balance the state's guidance in an area where we also have housing targets.
Yeah.
So similar questions, I think, are being asked to the ones that, that we've kind of analyzed and are offering what we think is a pretty balanced alternative.
But kind of similar-ish to 1110 where we had less to do because we'd already gone through middle housing?
Good comparison.
Yeah, okay.
That's a really good comparison. And yeah, I want to double down on that we, our, our mitigation requirements that we had prior were above and beyond that one-to-one. You know, so our, our push for higher-quality buffers when someone did do development is fantastic. And we're leaning on that as something that is helping us to get through and to meet those, those standards, to improve wildlife buffers and improve water quality. Any other questions? Oh, there's those proposed requirements. Does that trigger the memory? That's, so this is already in our code. We're changing it. It was, it's put together by Department of Ecology for wetlands in particular. And this is one of the pieces we'd be leaning on. And so lights, noise, dust and air pollution, toxic runoff, that correlates back to pesticides, stormwater runoff, which correlates to, you know, turbidity, the quantity of water coming into the play, and then pets and human disturbance. So, yeah, I think, yep, that's it. That's all I got. Any other questions?
Commissioner Rosman.
I guess, I, I know you said it's really hard to compare to other cities. But, you know, for when we come to public hearing, if there's any kind of, anything that you can share as far as comparison and how other cities are thinking about this, I think it is helpful, especially because you're saying that we're doing something pretty different. And it sounds like it's a good different, but interesting that it is, you know, sounding unique.
Yeah, I, I can bring more to you. I haven't checked in with our cities and things change fast. It's been probably three weeks. I'll be talking to Bellevue later next week. And we have, there has been a lot of discussion back and forth. But every city, kind of what we said, is starting from a different point. You know, some cities have 25-foot buffers on their end streams right now. Ours are 50 to 66. So we're already starting in a better position. And, yeah, so I, I can get more information on where people are at and what comments they've had back. And we'll be getting more comments back as well from the state. We're turning that in for a review. And so we'll have some official state comments back to share as well.
Commissioner Reiser.
It would be interesting to see just how many houses this affects in Kirkland.
Yeah, I have done some calculations. So we have, right now, a little less than 2,000 homes that are on streams right now. And, oh gosh, I can't remember the name. It was over 2,000 that would be impacted by a buffer expansion. So that was, you know, it, it doesn't feel like, you know, when you compare to 25,000, it's 10% of the properties. But it's a significant impact on those properties. And so that was, one of the things we were looking at was.
How hard would it be to get a basic map? Just to see where the majority of these lay?
We have a stream map available online on our interactive, our public GIS browser includes a layer where you can turn on known streams and wetlands. So we'd be happy to.
Thinking I'm much brighter on computers than I am.
We can, we can, we can send out a link. Yeah, and we'd be happy to walk, walk anyone through. But it is, it is publicly available. So community members can all access it. One of the things I wanted to mention really quick as you're asking about how many properties are potentially impacted, I did want to make sure the commission knows that staff did send out postcards to every property within 150 feet of a known stream throughout the city so that any property potentially impacted by either a buffer increase or the potential RMZ received notification that the city's looking at potential changes. And that postcard included links to the city's webpage where they could see some of the images that you've seen tonight and also gave them notice of upcoming meeting dates. So we haven't heard a ton of public comments, but we did send that out to all property owners to try to get the word out so that the commission could, could make sure to get comments from people that might be potentially impacted. Yeah.
And just to clarify, the, what's currently available on the city's public maps is where the streams are, not necessarily where the proposed buffers are.
Exactly. To show a buffer map, I do have one. When you look at the whole city, it's very difficult to see, you know, where 150 feet is out when you're looking at all 17 square miles. How many square miles do we have in the city? That 150 feet around all of the streams is difficult to see in its own. But those examples I showed with the, I'm going to zoom back here. These are our real-life examples. These are areas where we zoomed into an area in Kirkland. As an example.
Commissioner Medea.
Well, and if you sent postcards, and we do have specific addresses and numbers of homes that?
We do. And we sent out, so oddly enough, 4,000 postcards went out within that 150-foot riparian management zone. And that includes condominium owners and stuff like that. So there's a lot of increase. That doesn't necessarily mean a property by property. But we do have the numbers of the amount of properties and, and what would be impacted.
Any further questions, comments?
Did want to go over just next steps on this for the commission and any community members watching this live or after the fact. So our, our plan is to bring this back to you for a public hearing at your next meeting on October 9. We actually sent the official public hearing notice out today. So that is your next meeting. That will be full draft code. So just wanted to, if any questions come up, as I'm sure you all think about this more, you know, tonight, feel free to contact us if any questions come up or if you think of any additional information you'd like to see prior to that public hearing, would be happy to help. We do have, right now, the following meeting on October 23 also open. So we've kind of bookmarked that in case, for some reason, the commission might not feel, if you want a little more time to ruminate on anything after the public hearing on the 9th, we do have space. So we wanted to give this one a lot of breathing room. We know it's a lot of information. But we did, we were really interested to get a full draft code out for people to start absorbing today, or rather, last week when it was published. And then, yeah, give you some time for the public hearing as well. So just wanted to note next steps.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate having that flexibility just in case we do get a lot of comment to, to work through. Commissioner Bagnon.
The letter that came in from Master Builders today, it raised some interesting questions. And I know there's probably enough time to do that. But how is that normally dealt with? I kind of wanted to see the answers to what they proposed. But would that come back at the public hearing? Or would I, would you, I'm not sure what, what the correct question is. Because sometimes, you know, letters bring up issues. And I don't know if Planning Commission responds to them or staff responds to them. But there's some interesting issues there that are not necessarily covered.
Yeah, so I think on this one, if there's an interest from the commission, we're happy to, we, I think we actually feel like many of the concerns raised in the IMBAX letter, we do have addressed in the draft code, perhaps not to the full extent of the request that is being made by IMBAX. But again, to strike that balance. So what we can do if the commission is interested, which it sounds like you are, is staff can work on kind of outlining where in the code where we've addressed kind of that specific question asked by them. And we can distribute that out to the commission as well as to IMBAX. And we could probably do that, if not in the, if not in the next week, I think we could include the information about that in the hearing packet.
I'm not sure if anybody else had read that letter. And I'm not sure that I agree with all of it. But there's some things, questions in there that kind of beg for an answer.
Yeah, I just found it today when you mentioned it because it was buried in the quarantine. But I dug it out. And so I'm catching up on it now. What I think might be even more interesting is to highlight the gaps between what IMBAX is proposing and what staff is proposing, rather than, rather than highlighting what the city's done to, to address the concerns. What are the things that, that aren't yet addressed?
Yeah, and just at a, at a high level, and I, I don't have the letter right in front of me, but, you know, there were several points about increasing flexibility for geological. of me, but you know, there were several points about increasing flexibility for geologically hazardous areas review. And I don't, I don't think that staff's recommendation on the code is going to go as far as perhaps their request is. But what we've really tried to do and what Jen outlined is looking at the places where we do feel from our now years of experience with Chapter 85, where we do feel like we can grant a little more flexibility, both for when we require a geotechnical report in the first place and also when we're requiring peer review. And so those are, that was actually, I think, the majority of, was directed towards Chapter 85. And I think that we're, we're striking a good balance on that. As Jen mentioned, we are having our geotechnical consultants give that draft code a review right now, which is why I say I don't know that we'll grant as much flexibility as some folks might be requesting. But we are looking for areas where we feel we can confidently grant more flexibility and make things a little bit more streamlined during permit review, which also will reduce cost for people. And we can articulate that a little more specifically in, in the response I mentioned that we can put together. You know, on Chapter 90, flexibility and cost to applicants, that one's harder because whereas the state seems pretty happy with where Chapter 85 is for geo-hazards, the state's guidance is asking us to do a little more on Chapter 90. And, and that's, that's a tough one where I don't know that there's a lot of opportunity to reduce the permit review process or costs, but we are trying to streamline it by making things more clear. At a high level, that's some initial response. The riparian management zone, we do know that we, we want to do a little more work on the code before it hits public hearing to make those requirements clear, make it really clear when it would kick in. You all asked some questions about that tonight, too. So we do have a little bit more code to write in that area, and that's a great comment from them that we fully acknowledge.
Any other comments from the commission? No? All right. That, I think that, is that the end of the study session? All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we have none. And so we're on to reading and/or approval of minutes, and we have a few. Any, would anyone like to?
I motion to approve the KPC retreat minutes and the June 12th, July 10th, and July 24th meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did I see that one of them was from January of 2024? Okay.
Oh, '24.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I can't, I wasn't there, so I didn't know if it was a mistake or that had never been approved before, but just pointing it out. I read the packet.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Can we just mention the little Clippy next to the, like, I'm looking at the virtual agenda and there is a little like Microsoft Clippy next to the like minute, A, B, C, D.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I was noticing there's an odd user interface, oddity, that's, I think, part of the underlying software behind.
Yes, but it looks like the original Clippy.
Original Clippy, yeah.
Staff acknowledges that we are attempting to bring Clippy back.
Very unimportant noting.
Is that, is that a Planning Commission? Does it need like a zoning change for Clippy?
Perhaps a vote, but no zoning change.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was.
Sorry, I totally derailed you.
No, no, it's all right. I was like looking around for like, if you click like on here, I see like if I click on the date now, it actually expands the, to show the downloadables. But on a different system I was on, I was like, where is a little hotspot that I can click on to view it? So, a little finicky, but. Any, let's see, we're on to the next item, administrative reports and Planning Commission discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we talked about your upcoming meetings a little bit already, but just to restate that, we are planning on bringing the critical area ordinance update back to you for public hearing at your next meeting. That's the only item scheduled for that agenda. We do have the following meeting on October 23rd held for potential continuation of that hearing if needed. And then following that, I don't think this made it into your packet, but we have scheduled in a hearing for the annual comprehensive plan amendments to your only meeting in November since we, we always cancel the second one. It falls on Thanksgiving. And just quickly, on the annual comp plan amendments, that is something we do every year because the state's Growth Management Act only allows us to update the comprehensive plan once per year outside of a couple special exceptions. And we do, have used it every year to update the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. I sent you all an email. I wouldn't expect you've all made it to it because I just sent it this morning, but I wanted to give you a heads up on what we are planning to include in this year's package of annual comprehensive plan amendments. Similar to your kind of annual miscellaneous code amendments, these are typically not policy changes. They're usually pretty minimal. But I did want to just review them quickly with you and ask the commission if you wanted a further briefing on them before we bring it to public hearing, just in case you are interested to hear more about any items. So one of the items, and this is often an item in the package, is redesignating recent city acquisitions that are intended for parks. And so the city has purchased, or was actually, it was donated to the city this year, a property that is going to be a new park. And so we need to, in the comprehensive plan, update the land use designation of that property to park. We are checking to make sure there's not any other properties, but right now we think it's just that one. We need to make a couple little updates in the utilities element of the comprehensive plan to acknowledge the selection of the Northeast Recycling and Transfer Station. So when we adopted the comp plan update last year, the county was still in site selection for that facility, but it has been selected now, and so we just want to update for accuracy. We need to add an, just a reference to the citywide transportation connections map into the transportation element. So the change doesn't change the map, just adds a reference to make it easier to find. We have a few amendments to the newer appendix. It's the narrative history of Kirkland that was adopted with the most recent comp plan update. We are making a few minor text amendments in that appendix after consultation with some folks from the Kirkland Heritage Society. And so I don't expect you to remember it because it was a long time and a lot of hearings ago, but I think we had mentioned that we were still continuing to work with the Heritage Society on a couple potential amendments. So we finished that work now, we want to make those updates. We do actually already have a draft of those appendix updates on the comprehensive plan website. If anyone's interested, those have been up for, I think, almost a couple months now. And then lastly, updating the capital facilities plan tables, which is what we do every year. We actually think we're going to do a bit of a format change this year. Instead of including the facility tables themselves in the comp plan, we might start hosting those virtually and just add a reference to the comp plan. So those are the amendments. And looking for some direction from Planning Commission, if you want a briefing with more detail or if you'd prefer us to bring that directly to public hearing for you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I think it's simple enough that we can do it with just the public hearing.
Yep. I don't see any disagreement.
All right, well, then we will bring that to you at your first meeting and your only meeting in November. And that's it from you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any items for discussion, general discussion from the commission? I'll note that I will be remote at the next meeting, and I've asked Vice Chair Rosman to, to chair that meeting. Commissioner Nolan.
Yes, speaking of that, I'll be either remote or not present for the next two meetings as I'll be overseas in a different time zone. I will try to remote in, but no guarantees.
For both October meetings.
Both Octobers, yes.
All right. Any, no other discussion? With that, we are at the penultimate item on the agenda, comments from the audience. This is the time when we will listen to or are available to listen to any comments. If you are remote, you can press the raise hand button. If you're in the audience, then you're welcome to, I think we can just stand if you'd like to speak to us. And if not, seeing no interest. Looks like we have reached the end of our agenda and this meeting is adjourned.